...image in your voice may be recorded. And this is a public hearing for substantial modification to the comprehensive permit for the Cape's of Burling, located at 58 South Street. The petition is here. Would you like to make a presentation of what changes you want to make?
I'll be happy to do that.
For those that are here, would you just state your name and your relationship, please?
My name is Seth Van Hoorn. I'm with the Charmander List, lead by Andrew.
That's very good.
Now, we'll go low. We have a little water line, but I have small ones for you two. So I'm here on behalf of Martha-
Perhaps you could even put it on the back of that table?
Be happy to. This is my asking back, but the proof of mailing is there.
Are we all set the other way in? Yeah.
You would like the big one turned around?
Well, at least sideways so that they can view what is being said.
And I'll be happy to turn it around afterwards if there's any specific questions. And we do have full site plans on the other side. So we were here for you. We started this process about three years ago. Most of the board members, I'm sure, remember, were back and forth on many items resulting in a comprehensive permit. And what we're here for you tonight is we're requesting modifications. We've reduced the unit sizes and also substantially increased the spacing between the unit sizes. And our goal is to provide each unit an individual lot. Previously, we had a series of condominium associations with multiple units on a lot. And now we'd like to break it out that's more typical for how houses are here. And each unit would be responsible for its own septic and well, just like every house in Berlin is. And what we've done on this plan, we've highlighted in red, it shows you the previously approved separation distance, the comprehensive permit plan that was approved, and then we're showing you in black what we're asking for now. And so in many cases, they've doubled or more, so we've added quite a bit more spacing between the units. There's no change in any of the access or the stormwater management system, and those all remain valid in that the stormwater management system was designed for a larger impervious area. And when we went to the smaller units, we ended up actually reducing the sewage flow from the site, so that'll be a reduction in round numbers, about 40,000 gallons per year will be reduced from going into ground. And that goes to the same on the water side. There's going to be reductions in the water withdrawal as well in this configuration.
If I could interrupt you for one second. There's a sign-in sheet over there. If you wish to be recorded as being present at the meeting, please put your name and address on the page. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Seth Van Hoorn. Previously, there was a series of three larger septic systems, and they required some long force mains. One of the waivers we received was to have force mains in excess of 100 feet. We no longer need that waiver. These are all going to be in line with what's regularly done here.
So what waiver is it that you don't need?
You had a waiver. The Berlin Board of Health requires a waiver anytime you have a force main or a sewer line over 100 feet from the foundation to the leaching area. And previously, we did require that, and so in this configuration, we no longer require that. So one of the things we did in the original approval is that we met the Board of Health setbacks to all of the adjacent lots. So in a sense, the leaching areas, any of the septic components, whether it was one house, a series of houses, they would all be able to meet those setbacks, and we maintain that in this layout as well. So we're in full compliance with the local Board of Health regulations to all of the abuters properties, and that includes the wells as well. And then we are exceeding Title V for all of our internal setbacks, so it'll be far in excess of the state's minimum requirements for all the individual units. And that was something we talked at length through both the decisions, Seth Van Hoorn and me. Many of the items there. Originally, we had proposed an advanced nitrogen reduction system that was required for the larger systems, and we're still incorporating that in the site. So the strength of the sewage that's coming out would be much less seen in a traditional building. So that's a big enhancement to public health, any of the surrounding wells. One of the things that was a condition of the existing permit was that if the abuters chose, they could have their wells tested, and Mr. Rose has been working with them to complete that. So that's the changes in a nutshell. Again, there's no changes to the actual layout of the access or any of the stormwater infrastructure. We're just looking for changes to configure the lots as shown and to configure the units as shown. And you have some elevations of the typical houses that'll be constructed.
Can I ask a question?
Anytime.
It's probably skeptical, but I'm guessing this wasn't all precipitated by the desire to get rid of condo associations.
Generally, we looked at several layouts in it, and we decided that this works better with the Board of Health requirements. And it's been about three years since this project entered the permitting process. Mr. Rose desires to build a smaller house.
On what grounds did DEP refuse you?
In regards to-
Well, they refused the design, correct?
No, they said that the site would need a public water supply well. And so in looking at the public water supply well, one of the requirements for that is that the site needs to support what's called a Zone 1, which is an enhanced larger wellhead protection radius, which we can support on the site. And then there's a Zone 2-
All right. I'm confused. If you're going to have a public water supply, and it has to have 400 feet around the head or whatever, but each individual house is going to have its own well, correct?
Correct. So that's typical in the configuration that is done in town.
Being that DEP refused you, can I ask if you have brought this plan to them as yet?
No. So this is an alternative configuration that does not require public water supplies approval. So what are the drawbacks of a public water supply well? You either get a Zone 2, which is a larger protective radius, which are allowed to do certain things, and you can have houses, septic systems, any of those items in a Zone 2. And there's a Zone 1, which you can't have anything in. So the adjacent school property has a Zone 1 around their well. And then when they haven't determined what the Zone 2 is, they do what's called an IWPA, which is interim Zone 2, and that actually extends onto our property a little. Now, the drawback with putting a public water supply well on this property and while it would be totally allowed, the Zone 2 would extend all the way onto the abuters properties. And there's no restriction on doing that, but that would create the abuters properties, which deemed a nitrogen-sensitive area. And that requires them, if they ever go to replace their septic systems, it's a much more costly system to put in for them, so we're avoiding that in this configuration.
I'm simple, but I'm confused.
Part of what's going on is it's no longer condos, so they're now single-family homes, reduced-sized lots.
Why don't you do this first?
If I thought of it, I would've. It's a much better way to go.
So the septic on some of these are actually under their driveways?
There's just the corner of one that's under that.
There's lot 2.
It would be lot 2 and lot 3, yeah. So, and that's completely allowed, both locally and under the state.
Basically, though, you converted where the wells used to be, I mean, where the septic used to be where the wells are, because now your property units are broken up, and the well lines run way up on the properties.
Oh, there's really not too much-
That map doesn't show it at all.
I have the full plan there, and you have it, too.
Yeah, the full plan. They go, what is the space between each little slice of property, little well lines?
I believe they were 10-foot wide strips.
They have to be 10-foot?
They could be a lot less. I mean, a well pipe is two inches.
How does someone get their well pipeline fixed if they've only got a 10-foot length?
An excavator.
Right, but how do you get an excavator in there if you don't have any other adjacent way to get into it?
They didn't come off of their property. The whole place is flat. The place is all sandy.
But you'd have to get permission to do that.
No, each lot would have a full width access to do so.
All right, why don't you get to that page, because I didn't see it.
Okay, I'm happy to flip to that page now if you'd like to discuss it.
Is C401?
It's on a couple sheets, but that one, I believe, is the rating sheet and utility sheet, which would show it.
So you've broken up the lots again, so now that Lot 1 has an adjacent little parcel where you put the well, right?
No, they're contiguous lots. They're one, two-
But you have them connected, but it's a strip of land. Your 10-foot strip goes through like three different lots along the edge of lots.
It's all owned by Lot 1, so that entirety of-
I understand that, but it runs, so if you've got your Lot 1 here, that little line, your well line, runs along the whole back of the property into the square over there.
Correct.
Right. And then 2 goes all the way, then 3 goes all the way, and they do the same down here on the back. So your, some of these well lines are how long?
Round number 300 feet.
At least.
Yep.
Sometimes you have a well that's 800 feet deep. It's not the horizontal distance that causes extra work for a well. It's a depth of the well that creates a lot.
I understand that, but if there's ever a problem, you've got literally your neighbor's yard, and you've got a little 10-foot length that goes-
We've run sewer lines well to 2,000 feet in this town, so-
Yes, I know that you've done it before, but this is-
They're a lot well, and those are not extreme-
This is totally changed from what you had before.
They're not extreme distances.
Yeah, but it's totally different than it was in the original permit.
That's why we have a modification.
Yeah, okay.
So the little slivers along the edge are 10 feet wide?
Yeah.
If, what if somebody has to, say, drill a new well? How do they get that big truck out there?
Truck's eight feet wide.
They drive a truck along the 10-foot length?
The truck is eight feet wide. It's all sandy gravel. It's easy to drive out there. Or if necessary, you could get a track well rig, which is much longer.
Except according to sheet C501, most of those little 10-foot strips are in the preserved buffer zone for vegetation.
Yeah, another alternative, and it would be completely realistic, is there could be temporary easements that would allow-
It could overlay access easements for maintenance, which is probably legal.
Just another question. What is a proposed stockpile area?
That's just designating an area to put materials during construction itself. It's erosion protection.
And the proposed property lines are just something that has changed since the last time?
Correct.
So all those have to be?
Correct, yeah.
So you've got several changes there, too, at least three or four.
We did. You have a letter from our office July 31st that outlines the changes that are associated with this layout.
So these pipes that run parallel, I'm taking there's going to be like three pipes going to one similar location, correct?
No, each unit would have its own water service coming into it, so other than the area with actually the wells, they would branch off from there.
I'm still confused. Going behind lots 1, 2, and 3.
I think if you switch to sheet, the one that I have off- Yeah, you can, the individual wells, so like this lot, for instance, Lot 4 has a very direct well, which is like-
But the wells for the other folks are in the, are not on the abutte lot?
No, every well is attached to a-
They're connected, but it's a 10-foot strip that goes 300 feet to this little box down-
So they have it right away to run down to here, and each one has their own well?
Little box. They are connected, but it's, you kind of need a road map to figure it out, yeah.
So there is a sheet that shows just the lots and separations in there as well.
So that would be by easement, is that?
Nope, they're all, they're completely all-
10-foot length?
Entire-
Spaghetti map.
So if you go to sheet C2, I believe it is, and I'll flip to it on the big one.
Easement's going to be able to live on the whole area.
All right, folks, if there's any discussion, could we share it with everyone, please?
Oh, no, I was just looking at that sharp corner in the back for Lot 12, and I said, I don't know how that machine would get around that little corner. And Mr. Rose said that he would add an easement to one of the other lots to get there without having to go down along the property line around the back to get the well.
We'd be happy to extend the utility easement along the entirety of the back parts for future access, should we feel that's needed.
Well, don't you think it would be needed?
Not with each lot having its own slice of land to get there, but we're more than happy to do that. And an easement can be added at any time, as long as Mr. Rose controls the property. We're happy to show it on this plan, but it could be done at any point in the process.
Explain to me again why DEP is not going to be involved in this, so that I don't think maybe we are doing a lot of work that could be shut down afterwards.
Because they're now single-family homes. They're no longer condos. The DEP grouped them together as a group, which isn't legal, but they changed the policy. We've done two of these projects already, and the DEP doesn't even agree with themselves. So now we've taken it out of their jurisdiction by making them single-family homes, on single-family lots with their own well and their own septic. So there's no longer, so now there's six people on every water supply, which is well under the 25, and there's one service commander.
Hold on, there's six people on-
On the water side, they've doubled the number. They look at it very conservatively. So if it's a three-bedroom house, they automatically say that a minimum of six people is being serviced by this-
The DEP will look at this again.
No, this is, it is an alternative that does not require their approval.
You couldn't work with them on the other one?
We could. As I mentioned, it puts a pretty severe restriction on all the abutting lots. And when we went to the smaller houses, this was deemed a better solution, and that it's much more consistent with how lots are configured in this town.
So the size of these houses is going to be smaller?
He used the smallest floor plans that he had in the original package, so yes.
How much of a decrease in square footage is it?
500 for 1 and 200 for another.
So what's the range of square footage?
1768 to 2080.
So granted, you are not next to a abutter's, but you change your dimension next to each individual housing unit, which again would be going, dealing with the Board of Health and everything else all over again.
We have resubmit plans, we have resubmit plans to the Board of Health for the additional waivers that we get. And we submitted the septic's already for the last round, and they were all ready for approval subject to DEPs and vote. So we would have to submit 12 septic plans and well permits for approval through the local Board of Health.
Doesn't this basically change everything?
Do you have a comprehensive list of those waivers that you no longer require and additional ones that you may require?
We give you a list of all the ones that we required, require, and that's in the July 31st letter. It notes the one that we don't need in terms of the lengthy sewer line lengths. I don't have a comprehensive list of any of the ones, other ones that were omitted from the original one.
I think it would be helpful to us if we had a list of what the final list of waivers that you will need will be, and any that you need to delete from the original.
Okay.
Now, Chairman, may I ask a question? Amy? If we, if this area becomes open because of this original comprehensive permit, are we also allowed to basically deal with every waiver they've dealt with under a comprehensive permit when they're going to reopen it?
No, under substantial modification, you can only deal with the modification. So-
The word, which obviously is a huge amount of modification here.
Right, so Chair's idea is a great idea. It would be really good to have a chart that shows every waiver that was granted. In that chart, they should, they should note which neighbors, which waivers are staying, so which waivers are still required, but they've already been granted, and then which waivers are no longer granted, and if there's any new waivers, which waivers they're requesting that are new that have never been looked at. I'm just trying to keep up and figure out exactly what's changed. There's been a lot.
The only thing that's the same is the driveway and the-
The property, essentially.
The stormwater system.
So the septic has changed, the water has changed, lot lines have changed, house sizes have changed. It looks like the landscaping has changed.
Yes.
And we need to check and see if this plan affords the same amount of screening as the approved plan, because that was very important to this board. So we have a lot to look at.
So it does, and one of the things on your title sheet is actually a table of which plans have changed and which haven't.
That's not as much as-
I think Amy's-
Oh, no, we're happy to provide it. I'm just pointing out that I think that a lot of the things that have changed have increased the setbacks.
Will there be any condo association-
No.
-with this?
So that also-
Who's going to maintain the road?
The road is private. There would be a road, it would be, it's not a condo association, but sharing a road. It would be a-
Like a common driveway agreement, treated like a common driveway.
Okay, are you calling this a common driveway?
It is, yes.
It's a road.
It doesn't meet the requirement to not buy lot.
It exceeds it. That's, some of the original waivers were to allow for a common driveway to be built to higher standards.
But that changed-
Well, there's several, have you read through all of this required in the common driveway?
Have.
Okay. Number one, it's an alternative to each house having its own driveway, which would be a possibility.
I wouldn't call it a common driveway. I'd call it a private way.
I'm looking to call, if that's what you want to call it, if you want.
I don't want to call it a common driveway. I want to call it a private way, and-
So this is basically a subdivision?
Yes.
So you're planning on having the, I guess I don't understand, who's going to do the snow plowing, who's going to do-
It'll be an association, but it's not a condo association. It'll be a homeowners' association that maintains the plowing and the future paving of the roadway and the stormwater.
So again, that whole agreement changes too, as well?
Excuse me?
So that whole agreement would change from the previous agreement there as well?
There'd be modification to it, because there wouldn't be as much maintained. Now you have deed of property ownership, so they own their property before it was condoized.
I understand that, but you still have, someone has to take responsibility for it.
Yes, I understand. The proper documents would be drafted to take care of that.
So that needs to be as well?
I think one of the things that I'm a little disappointed is, and I know you're anxious to get this done, but we didn't get the plans until less than a week ago.
When did you see them, sir? About the 16th. We were provided a document that said all additional materials are due by the 21st.
And I guess it wasn't filed with the modification.
Correct, yeah.
So, you know, there are boards that haven't even had an opportunity to look at this. Have you met with any other boards in regard to this plan?
No, this adds to comprehensive permit, the decision rests here, so.
But we do need input from other boards.
Correct. So we provided many copies of the plan, and we're happy to, if you set a reasonable timeline for them to provide input on it.
Well, particularly for some things like shore of health and stuff, I would think that you might want to touch base with them.
You know, we went through that at length, several meetings with them on the last time, and their stance was that if it doesn't meet the local regulations, then they feel that it shouldn't be approved, and that's their prerogative. But unfortunately, in the comprehensive permit process, there are waivers that are requested and allowed, and if they're not going to weigh in in constructive fashion on that, then there's really no point in having that conversation. To me, they may, their stance very clear on it.
Well, it may be different now.
We'll ask them if you'd like.
It would be my suggestion. How does the rest of it work?
And with the other groups as well. Fire conservation, basically everyone?
There's no wetlands on the property. There's no-
You've also changed the property area.
There's no wetlands on the property. There's no need to meet with conservation. We didn't meet with last time. There's no need to meet with now. The stormwater hasn't changed, the roadway is the same. It doesn't fall under plane, but it falls under the ZDA. So really, the only one is Board of Health. Board of Health and you guys, and Board of Health, if the two does not weigh in on it, it falls right back to you guys.
And on the fire standpoint, I know Lieutenant's here, I'm happy to let him speak if you'd like, but originally, it was approved with much closer-together units. We have not changed the access or the turnaround. That's completely the same. The only thing we've done with this is increased the distance between units, which I think required by multiplying is a beneficial thing.
During the mediation, we agreed to do sprinklers because of the distance to the buildings. Now these buildings are so much further apart. Had that been the case, then the sprinklers may not have even been on the table. But we're not asking to change. We're leaving that in.
I'm sorry, there are huge changes here.
How much farther apart will they be?
It's so-
The distances are on this page here.
Okay, okay.
Every block of ground belongs to one of the units, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
There is no common- I'm just trying to get my head around this well situation here on the right hand of this plan. In other words, you know, you have a house here, and the piping goes down here and goes to one of these wells.
On some sites, you wouldn't be able to do something like this, but because of the topography, it's so flat, and the soils are so accommodating, it's easily done. Very easily done.
And then house 2 goes down and goes to one of these wells?
Yes.
And is that true of-
All these little specks down here are all the other stuff?
About half of them have a broad leg that goes off to the well. Some of them over go to the well.
So, do they own, in other words, I'm looking at, let's see, what lot is this?
Sheet 2, what you have underneath there, shows exactly the boundaries of each particular lot.
Well, I know, but the lots are now configured in a very strange way, and that's what we ended up with in green acres.
I was brought about for adding nitrogen loading, so we had to make the lots bigger. That was also something that was imposed on us after the fact, as is this. So we go, we meet, we figure out what's best, and then we go down the line for the rest of our approvals, and things change. We still haven't brought our reportable plan in yet, so this would be basically our reportable plan, which we were required to do as part of our original permit. And that's where you do your whole conceptual and your construction plan, it gets designed and approved by the board, and then you go out to the rest of the world, get the rest of your approvals, and then you find out that modifications have to take place because you have to please other entities.
Okay, I'm looking at, I'm not sure which lot it is, but it's this one here. The second one from the other side. The lot itself is here. It has a sliver of land that goes down this way-
That's it.
And up here and over here, so their well is over here.
So like I said, we're happy to provide an access and utility easement along there so that there's a longstanding ability to go there if that's, if you don't like it.
With all the information that we're going to gather for you for the waivers for what's needed and what's needed, we can provide an additional sheet that shows an easement plan that would be recorded at the time of the recording of the lot plan, and that would give everybody the access that they need for any free maintenance, and give them the right to drive across to get access for a well pump installation, or if they had to deepen a well, or if they had to patch a well line, or if they had an electrical problem that needed to be dug up. So that's, that's very easily done.
And there's no way that you couldn't reconfigure this so the wells could actually be on a lot that's contiguous?
The lot is contiguous.
Well, it's contiguous, but it, most of it's here, and then it goes here and up here and over here.
The plan works by all manner and-
Basically, you don't have enough room to put the wells behind the houses.
You can't, because they are separate.
Because you have the septics, so you have to go through this lot.
Yeah, I mean, it's one of-
Where's the fire wall? Where's the fire system?
They- They, they omitted that in the original approval, they chose sprinklers instead.
And then, you have three houses that look like they have smaller systems, smaller septic?
Two bedrooms, two bedroom houses.
How come I have three here?
No, there, there's three two-bedroom houses.
There used to be two.
Correct, so we reduced-
So that's another change.
Yes.
So are the two-bedroom houses, also, you mentioned six people as a load?
No, that, that would be four.
Four, yeah. So what is, because I'm not remembering that one.
We just admitted bedroom, the room still is there, but it becomes a study.
Right, but when you had, when you had shared systems, what was the total number of people that were being used as a reference point for the shared systems versus?
Twenty-four, twenty-four in a system, and now we got six and a floor in a system.
So it was twenty-four times three or four?
There was an eleven-bedroom septic system, twelve-bedroom, and two twelve-bedrooms, I believe, so two twenty-fourths and twenty-two, and an eleven.
We're blurring that, the sewage flows are done just by bedrooms, and then on the water side, DEP looks at it, they multiply the bedrooms by two. They assume every room is that large.
Alright, so twenty-two, twenty-four, and twenty-four was the previous setup, is that right?
Yeah, on the water supply, I think, yes.
Okay, and so now it's three times four-
It's one bedroom in the last now.
Yeah, but is the number of people different?
Yes.
That's what I'm trying to get at.
It's two people less.
Am I hearing something, in other words, there were three bedrooms, but now there's two bedrooms in a study?
No, one, one of the units got reduced, there was always some two-bedroom units in the original approval, and now there's one additional two-bedroom in lieu of a two-bedroom.
It's a smaller footage, square footage?
Uh, size.
It's not the same size, you're calling it bedroom study?
Yeah, so they restrict, they put a deed restriction.
How come you didn't make it a smaller home?
It's easy enough to build the same way, and we just de-restrict it, and it's controlled by the deed. It's done, it's done in town all the time for a regular family, regular houses, so somebody adds an extra room, which they're allowed to.
So basically, it ends up still, okay.
Would be interesting to police.
That's no different than the original approval, though, because there was a mix of units, and there were restrictions on the number of people that, that could be-
It's the same as the approved plan.
Which was part of the condo association too, see, so the neighbors could complain, now it's each, each man's room, so. Okay, you're willing to go and at least talk once or twice to the Board of Health, are you?
We're gonna see the Board also.
Okay, and DEP is absolutely not involved in this, you don't even need their approval. Because we would hate to go through this and then find out that DEP says no.
DEP's, oh.
Okay, we agree that although you mentioned that this in your note, that this is a common driveway-
I would call it a-
We are calling it, are we calling it a private road?
It can be a private way.
I'm asking you what you're calling it. I'm sorry?
It would be a private way built to town standard, the roadway standard.
Okay, and there will be some kind of association or something that's-
HOA to take care of that, and then the stormwater management, and the plodding in the future, future paving.
So we'll give you a draft document of that, that's consistent with any common driveway in town that spells out how that should-
Do we have any plan that shows, I know Amy brought up, and I'm curious too, about screening?
Screening whatever was on the-
Well, I don't think you're gonna be able to-
So there, there's a landscape plan in your sheet, which is the exact same number of plantings that was originally agreed on, the exact same style of screening. The location was adjusted only as the units were, so if a house had three foundation plantings in front of it, it still has that same, same layout, so that the location of the trees moved, and we're happy to move them anywhere you want, but it's in the exact same sphere.
Well, I think that that would be more for the neighbors to take a look at, so what plan number is that?
So that is, I'll flip to that.
Doesn't your existing trees not going to be interfered by your water lines?
So the, the original approval specified that if a certain distance can be maintained between existing trees, if you, for those of you that have been to the site through the appeal process, there's a mix of scrub vegetation, a lot of invasive bittersweet, and then there are some okay maples in there, and so what was agreed in the original approval is that where there is an okay maple, it would be preserved along that screening, and then it would be supplemented as well, and that hasn't changed, so we need to meet that distance, and we're gonna supplement that with additional-
But can you show, if you come up here, if, if I'm doing C4, okay, and then I'm doing C5, and you've got the water lines right here, right, and this is your-
Yep.
Right here, but doesn't that literally take the whole thing off?
So it would be replanted, it would be screened.
So you're cutting all that down?
If you go to the site, there's really not much there.
But you say preserve existing trees, you can't, there's, it's impossible.
Oh, no, I mean, a well line's completely, it's a two-inch line, that it can, it doesn't have to go linear, it can move four feet to one side.
But you have, you have three or four of them, so you have three of them.
With the, with the, with the easement plan that will be overlaid on it, the, there's no offset for well line to property line.
I'm just, there's no way that you're gonna be able to preserve trees when you're building wells?
The, the trees, that's where-
How are you gonna get trucks back there to get the well, to, to do the wells, I mean, it's a construction nightmare, you're better off just saying you're not gonna preserve the trees.
No, I, I don't, what I think we'll do, and we've heard your concerns, and we're happy to provide an easement through the lots to access all those areas, and that can be utility easement, we'll keep the lot lines this way so that if it ever needed to be within the boundary of the lot, they can, but we could have a water line that goes across a different lot during accident season.
So basically, you've got all your little lot lines, and you put easement through right the back of everybody's yards.
There'd be basically one easement, and then the water lines would branch from there consistently with any subject.
Yeah, how wide are the easements?
Twenty feet would probably be more than appropriate.
But literally, that's gonna go through-
That's not gonna preserve trees.
Five backyard.
No, it would, it would result in-
We're gonna have the same coverage that was approved on the original plan, and if there's any trees that are taken down for the installation of a well line, we will replace them with what was proposed for the original screening.
And we, we had talked about this in the original approvals, and that it is a very standy site, so things can be transplanted very easily, that it can be uprooted, put aside, put back in, and that's, that's typical, and if they need to be supplemented, they would be supplemented in accordance with the approval that he has.
Actually, I think I'm hearing two different things, it sounds like you're saying an easement would go, say, between the two houses at the end here, right? The, the two houses at the end, there's a space between them that could access all of those wells at the back of the property, and you would put an easement there to get to all those wells, whereas, I think some of us are thinking you're putting an easement behind all the houses.
No, correct, you're correct, there would be, at the most appropriate point to minimize the access route and to minimize the well length if, if you chose to have the water lines within the easement.
Madam Chair, if I may, what I'm trying to say is that in the last plan, we had no construction along the, the entire parcel, consider that one lot, we had no construction along the lot lines, and now we do, and so unless they are gonna go out there and tag every single tree that they are going to keep, and put it on a plan, and then when they go into construction, if they have to remove a tree, they need to let us know which tree that's on that plan is going to be removed, there is no way that we can track how they are going to preserve existing vegetation, which is all this plan says, it simply just says preserve existing vegetation, so it seems to me like what you're going to end up with is clear-cutting along the boundary, along the property lines, and if that's the case, which projects do that, it's not, it's not that it's not allowed, but then we have different screening, and we have to come up with different screening, we have to come up with vegetation that grows very fast, that grows very tall, that doesn't grow wide, I mean, we have, we have to redesign all of this screening, if that's the case. Because, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't see them going out there and going around individual trees, and if they're going to, fine, but then we, those trees have to be marked in the field, and they have to be put on plan.
I, I also hear, you know, it's easier to mow the tree in other ways, you just pick it up and mow it, but some of these, I'm not sure that-
Where is it gonna get moved to, we need to see all that.
We're more than happy to address that, I think there's simple ways to do that, we can give the Board a couple options in that manner as well.
You can what?
We can give you a couple options in terms of how you would like the access route, a backup access route essentially, and we can even specify that, that what we've shown there is, is not to be utilized for that purpose.
Yeah, because we're showing screening on, I guess this is C5, right? And it's showing that we're pretty well screening it along, and then when we take a look at, yeah. But even here, okay, because there's gonna be, what's gonna be there now?
I'm not a construction guy, so this may sound like a stupid question, but it seems to me we have this, what I would call spaghetti lots here, just so that we can get wells for each house and exceed the hundred-foot-
Very nice.
From the septic on the sevens and, that, that's the whole purpose of those, right? You're gonna have HOA, there is no common land in this, is there a reason, instead of having all these little spaghetti lots, you can't just have a ten-foot strip of land all the way around the perimeter owned by the HOA, and have these areas that have all the wells in them as common land owned by the HOA?
Then it'd be a condominium.
Yeah, then it'd be a condominium.
Amy doesn't wanna go, definitely doesn't want to do it.
There's no way around that without, without becoming a condo association.
Is your problem with the septic's under the driveways, just?
No, no, that's, that's a lot.
I would go through and to entertain questions in the audience. Yes, sir, you said, Amy's street address, but you don't know it.
Okay, I'm sorry, my name's Dennis Mann, I live at 54 South Street, and I, I'd like to make a comment, one comment I'd like to make is-
Do I need to speak up, sir?
The one comment I would like to make is, is that at least the DEP was smart enough to figure out the convoluted plan that they first proposed, and that was convoluted, either septic, water, homeowners associations, whatever, they at least picked it up and stopped, and now we have one more chance, you look, common sense tells you the layout of those lots are just so he can squeeze in twelve homes, where the Board of Health said, you know what, that's excessive, that doesn't even make sense, here's a chance for the town to kinda stand up and say, you know what, this is a convoluted plan again, so he can get as many houses as he can get, forget the people that own the houses, and the white aways, and the people around it, and the town of Berlin, what he's gonna do to the land, just so the contractor can get twelve houses and make the money on twelve houses, now's the time to say no, and cut the number of houses down to what's reasonable for the new property owners, for the current abutters, we're not saying don't do anything, but let's not do another convoluted plan, and so we can, well, mark trees, that's all, that, that whole thing is, is convoluted, that's all I wanted to say, it's obvious to common sense, common sense.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else have something that they'd like to interject?
Madam Chair, I have a question for Amy.
Sure.
Just, just to understand the parameters, when this opens up, as a, as a substantial change, are, can we even entertain saying no, or is it gonna go back to?
It, it will go back to what, what was approved.
So it will still get built, because it was approved at some point?
At that DEP.
Because he just has to provide additional information to DEP that he doesn't wanna provide for the public.
Okay, so it's, it's not, this project is not getting stopped, no matter what?
Yes, it can.
No. It, it, they're approved comprehensive, they're seeking a modification.
So it's, it's not, there's not really a new option, it's trying to work with new parameters that we didn't have before.
Right, which, which, you know, this board has a right to investigate, and to evaluate and deliberate on everything new, that, everything that has changed, and, you know, I, I came in here thinking it was just the septic's and the well, but then come to find out, this is the first time I've seen the plans, and so there's substantial changes, numerous changes, I should say.
Yeah, I mean, I have like a lot of questions, and I think just a lot more information to be provided.
We have to go through, we have to go through this plan and compare it side by side with the plan that's been approved, and we have to find all these, all of the things that are going to change, for example, the screening, that, you know, that wasn't in the letter, but that's definitely, that's a change, it's a substantial change too.
What I wanted to do is, I wanted to address Mr. Minnick's question about stopping the project, because I don't think that is, is-
From a permitting standpoint, from a permitting standpoint, no, this, if, if the substantial change is denied, then he, he still has a comprehensive permit, if it can be built or not, that's not, that's, that's not up to the zoning board of deals, but it, he does have a valid comprehensive permit.
Yeah, but I just wanted to answer that question, can I be up to, if we did say no, he deals with the DEP?
No, I deal with the appeal process of the state.
Well, he deals with the appeal process, he deals with someone, not us.
So does the town.
So he can, he can appeal, if we deny his substantial modification, he can appeal it at HAC, and he can, you know, the whole time he's appealing it, he still has a valid comprehensive permit.
Okay, yes, sir.
So I just wanted to make something clear for myself is, is that he has a permit that we originally gave him to do work the original way he asked for it, that was found to be unacceptable by the DEP, for whatever reason, it was unacceptable, now he's coming back with a convoluted plan that he thinks he can just kinda roughshod over this committee because he has a permit, but what I'm saying is to the person who was kind enough to ask the question, he can't do that, if he can go back to the original plan through the DEP, then he's gotta go through the DEP, and they're telling him, that's a convoluted plan, it won't work, now, if he wants to fight the town or the state to try to override what the boards say, he can go do that, but I hope this board and this council doesn't shun the fact that a little bit of a stand-up for this town and the residents for this town would be well spoken.
Could I just ask a question, are you saying you can't build what was originally approved?
No, we don't wanna do a public water supply, and this is a-
Could I ask why?
Cost for one, and also negatively impacts the abutters, so I stumbled upon this, which is a much cleaner, better plan than what we had to begin with, so we brought it here to you guys, and seeking the approval of the change, go back to Board of Health to finish up, and then I was just about there with the state for the final approval, so that stuff will change as well, but you guys have been through the appeal of this before, so if, if it got voted down, I would take another appeal to the state, we'd all go back into Boston, and Mass Housing supports this project, Mass, Mass Housing thinks this is a good change.
If you remember, we supported the project.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
We don't have anything from Mass Housing that's capable to support the change.
I can work through with Mike Busby. Seth might have been on a site walk the other day.
So has he communicated with you as to the changes?
I didn't get that far with him, Seth, Seth, Seth had talked to him on a site work, my 4D consultant had brought up his speed on what we were doing, and he thought it was a good idea, they didn't wanna take a stand or argue with the DEP, even though they thought they were wrong, they thought this would be a better alternative, and I'm sure I can get something from, I personally can get something from that. I personally can get something from that.
I think that would be an excellent idea for you to...
Sure.
Get something from them. So the thing is, it's a case of money, really, right?
Well, it'd be...
It's cost prohibitive? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, it's very cost prohibitive for 12 units. You know, when you do a public water supply, usually you have 40 or 100 units. It's not... You know, they did a public water supply for the mall. That's more what...
They want a public water supply for the gas station. I mean, it's got to do with the use.
Gas stations are very different in terms of their use. But in a residential setting... The other thing with a public water supply is it adds ongoing costs to the homeowners as well. And that they're monitoring that once they're sold, that's taken on by either the homeowners association or whoever's buying water from the water supply. So it's quite a different take on it than what's going on in this town. And I wouldn't be involved in this right now if I hadn't done two projects exactly like it and there's been several other projects exactly like it that the DEP is changing a principle. But the letter that I got from them was not from their legal counsel because their legal counsel would not write that letter. It was written by a department head who doesn't have the authority.
Have you considered appealing with the DEP?
Appeal would take me a year in court, so...
Well, an appeal from any decision would take a year in court.
This is, "I like this product better and I believe in this product more. I think it's a better product and I think it's worth pursuing this angle than as opposed to..."
There is no way that you could do something along this line. I mean, there's no way you could reconfigure that road going in so that everyone could have their septic and their well on their lot.
There's not physically enough... There's not physically enough room to separate it from the wells to help...
How many houses would you have to give up in order to make enough?
I'm not planning on giving up.
No, yeah.
You don't make any money.
Okay, let's see what we're looking for. We're looking for a comprehensive list of exemptions. What was originally... The way it was originally requested and given. The ones that are now requested and the ones that are no longer. You know, some kind of a spreadsheet showing us what you need in the way of waters. I remember at a time, Mark, that when you... After Green Acres was done and there were some issues with the pipes going here and there and up and around and over and through, that you said, "Never again." I don't know. This kind of...
I was thrust into both those situations. There were circumstances beyond my control that forced me to do what I have to do to maintain my investment and move on.
So Amy, what are we... And you're willing to sit down with the Board of Health?
Yes.
Okay. So we need the waiver list. We need...
Landscaping.
The landscaping. We need all the documents related to a private way.
Even plan.
We need what kind of documents for a private way. They claim there was going to be homeowners associations. They claim they need to put in writing exactly what they're going to do regarding that private way. We need the letter from Mike Busby. We need to know where the easements are going to be because I'm assuming there's going to be more than one. And then again, the screening, whether they're going to... What they're going to mark trees, how they're going to do the screening.
And do any of these plans have the actual distance those pipes run for the water and stuff?
We can put in...
I think it would be important to me and perhaps to the Board of Health before you go to them to see how long those pipes go to the well.
There is no restriction on old regulation pertaining to that. So this is completely... There's no waiver related to that request.
I'd be curious.
I'm happy to provide it.
We're switching longer sewer lines for longer well lines. Before the longer sewer line required a waiver, but the longer well line, we can provide the information.
Lynn, I think on the list, did you include the letter from the state saying they approved this new layout?
Yeah, that's the letter from Mike Busby, guys. Thank you.
Could I make a request on you before the next meeting?
Sure.
I'm not sure how this is going to go in the morning, but I think it would be... The discussion of a public water supply. If we said no to this changes to the comprehensive permit and he decides to go after a public water supply, I think it would be instructive for both the board members and the members of the public who are abutters to be able to understand what that means to the abutters. I have no idea. So I mean, I'm understanding there's some... It would impose some sort of restrictions upon those abutters within 400 feet.
That's what they're saying. So I mean...
We could do an impact plan to show how much of that property would be taken up with the nitric sensitive area.
That would be helpful to you.
You're taking my property with your problems?
Yeah.
Well, my question would be, you know, can they impose something upon the butter?
Right. I see what you're saying. Okay.
You know, does that a butter have any say in...
I hope so. I should hope so. I mean, we have some rights. I mean, contractors don't own everything.
We want to find out.
That's good. Thanks.
We have some rights. We pay our taxes.
Okay, just before we close, because we do have another hearing at 8:00, I'd like to remind folks, if you want to be registered as having been present, make sure you're logged in over there. Do you have any questions of us as to what we're looking for at our next meeting? What's a reasonable time? We meet in two weeks. Is that a reasonable time?
I don't think that's reasonable.
Okay, so you want to go for the October meeting?
That'd be nice.
So that would be October 9th.
And what date would you want the documents by?
Well, I would think that it would be helpful at least three weeks in advance because we need to share them with others. Is there any question in your mind what we're looking for?
I'm going to read them back just so we don't have any miscommunication.
Okay.
So you want a list of waivers not needed as long as of comparison to the original one, preferably in table form?
And one's no longer needed and one's... New ones?
Correct. You would like the private way agreement with that to some maintenance requirements and how that'll be divvied up. Even plan for the well access, including well line length. You want us to meet with the Board of Health. You would like a letter from Mr. Busby at Mass Housing. And then the final request was for impact analysis of what a zone to a public water supply is. Would you screen letters of the landscape screening, sir?
Did you say private way? Oh, documents related to private way?
Correct, yeah.
I know the fire department now has some questions about the turnaround radius. They didn't in the previous one, I understand.
Yeah.
Is anyone here from the fire department that would like to speak to that issue? Please.
Dave Litchwell, Brolin Fire. I would like if they're going to be making some changes to this proposed project. We did it on the PTL-1 process as well. Would be to shrink the center island, make it smaller, and made that blacktop area four feet wider. So the radiuses of blacktop for street is larger for the fire equipment.
Is that something you'd consider? Okay, would you add that to your list?
Good.
Yes, sir.
Also, I would just like to add that the sprinklers are still required in this project.
Yes.
They've said that they will be, yes. Is there any other town department that would like to speak? I think this is important if there are issues that need to be brought up, that we bring them up as close to now rather than waiting until after you've done a redesigning and have someone say, "How about this?"
If I could just confirm. So on the 9th is when we'll be meeting. So three weeks prior will be September 18th. And that's when we'd like all done and it's fine.
Is that reasonable? Do you think that's reasonable?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we continue this meeting until 7:00 PM on October 9th.
And I'd like to note in your motion that the petitioner has requested our next meeting, our October meeting, in order to afford time to provide documentation.
So we need an extension form?
Before we vote on that, yes, sir?
I just had sent a request in to have some fencing or construction fencing along where I live while they go through this construction because they've been doing it since May. And I don't know if any of you have been down there, but there's a lot of dirt that's been moved around and a lot of dirt on my house and a lot of, how can I say it? Lack of privacy for construction vehicles right next to my bedroom, so to speak. Is there any way to put a construction fence up there sooner than later?
Not really, no.
Excuse me?
Not really. What is a construction fence? That's a silk fence, so it's three feet high.
No, well, about a 10-foot-high fence. That's what I'd like. That's what they have down at River Bridge. Why not? If you're living there, you wouldn't want it.
Excuse me. You speak to many.
I'm sorry.
He speaks to me.
I'm sorry. If you live in my house...
We're just doing some general grading down there. And we basically don't have anything left to do. Probably we've got one very small pile over into the screen and then we won't be doing anything next to down to his house until this is further along to get out.
Well, I understand, but the neighbors have some concerns about some kind of a bother during construction.
When we get to construction.
Okay, so how much longer do you feel that you're going to be producing dust or noise or whatever before this...
On and off until we break ground for good.
On and off.
So I guess there is a concern by the neighbors for some kind of fencing. And you are saying that's off the table?
We already have restrictions on noise and timing, so we're working with all of those. Had this moved forward a little bit better than defensively up, then I'd be putting foundations in. It's not time for me to throw in a $30,000 fence.
Thirty.
At this time, no.
What Mark's referring to is in the original plan that we agreed to provide a permanent privacy fence along Mr. Minnick's property. And that's something that it would be premature to do so and that it could get damaged.
I don't think anybody's asking for a permanent fence at this point. I think he'd be happy with a...
Change fence with a roof and a black screen.
Landscape type fabric.
Yeah, I could screen this up in less than a half a day and then it won't be working next to it.
I mean, could you actually move what you're doing away from his house? Why does it have to be next to his house?
It's just because we stripped the tops over there to use for Green Acres. And there's probably a 50-yard pile left, which could be picked up and moved out back in a half a day. Then the only thing is just in and out for the back of the site.
Okay, it doesn't take much, but I'm confused again. Are you saying you would be going to put up some kind of a temporary fence?
What I'm saying is the last pile that's there, I could even just leave it alone and not touch it. And it won't be working right next to his house until the project's out for good.
At which time you would put up some kind of a fence?
When it's fully permitted and approved by the state and approved by the town and the Board of Health, then that can be the first thing I put in.
Just like to ask one thing. Just to be honest about it. You've got a dirt driveway that goes the length of the side of my house and your trucks and your equipment go back and forth there to the back where you do your shoveling or whatever else you do back there. But your trucks in and out cause a heck of a lot of dirt and a lot of dust on me. Now, since May. And that's the fact and that's the truth.
You said you...
I have to stop working next to his house. But I have some more material to remove as a $10,000 head exploit over there.
Well, one of the other things he's talking about is traversing the land.
I have to drive in and out.
Right, but I mean, can you dampen it down once in a while or something?
You could probably add some more pressure onto the roadway if you reduce that.
Is that what you're willing to do?
Yeah.
We're also going to need to know if it changes the amount of materials coming out and going in changes. Because that was the way that... On the last one.
Okay. So you would want me to...
They need to supply us with any change in materials that are being imported or exported.
Did you add that to your list, sir?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to say there's a motion and a second on the table. Is there a...
I have a motion.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, aye? All those opposed? We'll see you October 9th.
Okay.
Thank you.
I was hoping to hit the ride up there with you, but I got back from Boston just... You were already gone. Yeah. Well, I had to go. I went on my son's...
Oh. Oh, yeah, and I came home with the dog.
To be near you. You got him? No. I've offered to give them a couple of minutes just to introduce themselves or whatever it is that they want to ask us about.
Yes, I'm Steve from the House, an engineer, John Greer. We're working on a site on One Main River Road West.
Better known as the San...
Yeah.
From the San.
Yeah. And so we originally came in with a 55 town meeting, which did not go successfully. We wanted to come in with another plan. Couple of divisions of the policy. One policy would be cannabis.
Well, if I could just interrupt you. I don't want to do something that may be done at the hearing. If there's some guidance you need from us or has some questions you have arise.
Yeah, so we want to come in to talk to your board and if you think this is appropriate, to come in with a concept plan to work with you, to seek your guidance, rather than come in with a full developer plan. We could come in with a plan and just... And if you could give us some guidance.
As a board, we can only hear called hearings and listen to appeals. Your first step is to go to... Have you spoken to the building inspector?
No, we've been talking to the selectmen and account managers about getting a host agreement, but we haven't.
The first step would be to go in with what you're looking to do. And like you say, a conceptual plan. And the building inspector will review it as it relates to our bylaw. And then will tell you, "This is what you need." I can't give you a permit to build this because you need site plan, you need a special permit, you need a variance, whatever you need. And then you come to us.
Okay.
Is that reasonable?
Oh, yeah.
And the whole concept is that he is the code enforcement person. And whatever he states is what we have to act upon. So it was nice to meet you and I think we'll be hearing from you again. My suggestion might be the town clerk is in your office until 8:00 tonight. You might want to get paperwork that shows you what you need to do if you are going to request a special permit or a site plan, which I suspect may be the things that you may need, but it's dependent upon the building inspector. And they will tell you the time. In other words, we can't just do it tomorrow. It has to be proper public notice, that sort of thing. And you might want to invest or look online at the zoning bylaws. So if the building inspector says, "You need a special permit." Okay? I would take a look and I would... The book is not that... There is not that most pervasive. Here it is, okay? I would familiarize myself with what you need on the special permit or on the site plan or whatever it is that they call for. But usually you have to submit whatever you need from us, variant, special permit, three weeks ahead of time. And you have to notify abutters and so forth. You also need lead time for me, because I'm slow, to write up a hearing notice. So you can see who we are. We know who you are. And you suspect you'll be back to see us again.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
You didn't bring any samples.
That really touches. Quite amusing, actually.
Earlier. Okay, thanks for allowing me to do that. Day fifteen, we're running fifteen minutes late, and we have a petitioner here. Looking for a variance, correct?
Yes.
So this is why you keep on talking about that you never bring to meetings?
We already have done the notices and everything.
Nice to meet you.
We continue to hear.
Madam Chair, I wasn't here last month, or last meeting, so whoever was, I won't be voting on this.
Okay.
Whoever was here.
Who was here last month?
I was.
I was.
Okay.
Well, it was two weeks ago, wasn't it, last month?
Yeah.
Quicker than that.
Not long ago.
Because of...
I know, we will, okay, we're right.
Did we get that today?
We need a site plan.
Okay. You were a little bit final the last time we saw you, because there was something huge as to what they were supposed to be here.
Yes.
So...
Have to pull them aside.
You found a very good woman who takes responsibility.
It was my handwriting on the calendar, I just turned it back over.
Okay. You're looking for a variance. We told you to take a look at Chapter Forty-B. Have you done that? Forty-A, Section Ten.
Section Ten.
And there's several reasons and several findings we have to have in order to grant a variance. One of our suggestions was that you go to the Conservation Commission, because from what you had said to us, it appeared that it was their request that you place this building where it is going. So how are we doing along those lines?
I was hoping they'd have sent you a letter from their side, but something like that's what happened. We did receive it either, we did go to the commission and discuss it with them.
You were there?
I think we were pretty adamant about that's the only spot that they would allow. We've been discussing, trying to turn it the face the other way. And Conservation Commission, why did that come to be?
Madam Chair, I had an eye-opener with the homeowners and talked to the Conservation Commission, and it's exactly as he said, the conservation believes that to turn it ninety degrees and make it longer would put the property, put the new development into the buffer zone further to a point would incur additional expenses.
And there's no place outside of the property, given the wetlands, is that correct?
What are the additional expenses?
Forgive me for the terms, but putting up the silk fencing and getting a wetlands specialist to go out there and tell them exactly what you need to do, I don't, I'm not...
They had a lot of initials, DORs and all that kind of stuff, but they basically did say that between the well and where the other positioning was, the driveway torn up, moving expenses, just grading everything, and they didn't want one upset, anything. They were very, very nice. They spent a good deal of time, and they sat with the drawing there and tried here, there, everywhere, with a lot of feedback, and they did say that they'd be more than happy to write the letter. They probably just hadn't gotten onto it, that they agreed with us. They explained the importance of the variance, and that it would continue with the property, and they signed that. And they did agree.
Just so I know, did they say anything about how the house came to be in the entire...
No, I don't, I don't know who your developer was, or the original person who built the house. And we didn't go back that far, and I think Walter probably was the only one there around that time.
Yeah, and you thought it was completely the same.
I mean, you can build in there, it just requires, you know, a greater cost.
Yeah.
And I did confirm with the chair of the conservation that they absolutely will write the letter. There's been some turnover with their board, and I just confirm now with her that it's on its way. So the letter is forthcoming.
They were very nice.
Okay, who's involved in this? It's Sue. Who was here last time? Sue's...
I was.
Jenny.
Jim was the only one not here.
So we have a packing order here. There will be the, with the exception of Jim, there will be the regulars plus Sue. Is that it?
Well, I actually, I actually think that he should. I know I would go first, but, because he went to the meeting.
I think that's a very good point. Okay. So it will be four of the regulars and yourself?
All right, I'll see you Friday.
Okay. So do we feel that we've met all of the, you went through the items? In Forty-A, that's Section Ten?
Yep.
And you feel comfortable?
Yeah.
So if someone would like to make a motion?
No, I have a concern.
Okay.
You stated the first night that you couldn't get your car into the garage and want to pull. Now you're going to put something else over there.
I'm actually trying to get rid of that car right now. Trying to get rid of that car right now.
So this is actually going to make it a little tighter.
I know, trying to sell that car.
Trying to sell the car. I think we can't still let it go in.
I thought it was a truck.
Yeah.
Was it interesting you said it was twenty-two feet from the house to the current shed, is what you measured?
So it's, and I have to show you all this. Yeah, it curves, so thirty-one is very back, but twenty-three point five is kind of the front, so...
Tightest from the narrow.
So when we come up the driveway, and here's the shed, this is the house and the garage, there's like a, I don't even know what it is that they were trying to go for, like almost like a little flower-type thing? So this is twenty-three, and this is thirty-one. So it kind of meets the term.
Sure. And so if I understand right, by putting in this additional garage, then you're going to be turning in a whole different lane.
Exactly.
So even though the distance stays the same, it does allow for a little easier maneuver?
Exactly, right, because of where this, you know, corner.
Okay, so let's take a look at what we have to find here. We have characteristics relating to the soil conditions, shape, and topography. And that's wetlands, right?
Yeah.
Okay? Or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located. And I think that's a fairly loose term. A literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance or bylaw would involve substantial hardship, in other words, you couldn't build it, financial or otherwise. And that desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. And as I remember, how many acres do you have?
So we have five, and I have to make, just like, and I apologize for the name, which is about a few.
Because I think that's important, because...
Yeah, but not all.
Well, the whole idea of having a twenty-foot side lot and forty-foot back is spacing, okay? So if you run a five-acre lot, I think that's...
Yeah, and I think that there was something in the provision, again, not lawyer, not lawyers, but interpreting, and kind of looking at the number of people that showed up here. And no one showed up for us, because no one is going to see it. There is really, you know, we can't see the neighbors here. They will not be able to see, they can't even see this building, maybe a little bit in the winter, when you don't have the freezing stuff, but no one can tell from where they are. Is it like, you know, another seven, ten, whatever feet?
Well, they've been given notice, and we've not heard from any of the neighbors in writing or in person, so...
But even, you know, knowing our property well, knowing where the neighbors are, this is just, it presents zero disturbance to them.
Madam Chair, well, I'm not voting, can I interject something here?
Sure.
I live at 128 Ball Hill Road. I drive by your driveway every single day, several times. You can't see a damn thing down there, even in the wintertime. Nobody sees anything from there. You see trees, and there's a little driveway that goes into the trees, and that's it.
That's a little unnerving, knowing you're looking.
There ain't nothing else out there to look at.
Thank you for that. And I think we have a picture from the top of our driveway, which is this.
Okay, folks, in general, do you think we've met the burden?
Yes, I do.
I do.
So if someone would like to make a motion to approve the variance?
I would make a motion.
It'll give me homework for the holiday weekend.
I make a motion for that to be approved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
We got two seconds, so...
Oh, all right.
Let's make a fourth. In voting on this will be Sue and...
No, Keith, Jenny, Patty, and Danny.
Okay, good. So they've decided. All right, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Next time, send her.
Good idea.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
What we have to do is, I'm going to have to wait until I get the letter from the Conservation Commission. They're going to send you a copy.
I have to find something before.
Really shortly. Please, though, I would be telling them it's holding up the decision right there. And you have to record it in the registry deeds, because it's all for the property. And you have to go back to the town clerk and give them a copy of the report. And it's not a question of money to record it.
Everything's, everything's on me, it's doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of things to discuss with folks. Number one, Mr. Susan?
Yes.
You said you wanted to go to that CNPR...
Yeah, it's too far up, you know, it's actually available at this point, but I am available...
Okay, is there any charge for it?
Turn your camera on.
Have a good night.
Do you know, Tim, that thing they hold in on solar panels? Thank you very much for coming this evening.
Yeah, you're welcome.
And speak up, speak up more often.
There shouldn't be any cost.
Oh, there shouldn't be any cost, okay. So it's like we can notify ourselves. Would you like a friend to come along?
I always like friends, but I don't think it's required, but it would be appreciated.
What do we do?
On the twenty-third, is it?
I don't remember now.
Yeah, I think it's the twenty, I think it's the twenty-third.
Is that marijuana?
No.
No, it's solar.
No, it's solar.
Oh, okay.
It's in the afternoon, and it's only for like an hour or something.
Yeah, so it's all...
That's a good distance. Okay, so let's leave it at this. We encourage folks to attend. If anyone's going, give me a call, so I can join them. Did you open your mail?
What mail? No, that, your mail?
Yeah.
From the zoning board?
No, no, what's this? Okay, next, one of the things I noticed, and Margaret, our new county administrator, when I had asked her about, you know, like, what do you do when there's no, when people don't show up? She sent me a list of about four towns that the zoning board has bylaws that includes what you do when nobody shows up. So I was thinking if for our next meeting, if we had a copy of our existing, I don't know if you call them bylaws, but it was sort of like, it's just the sheet that we hand out, right?
Call instructions that's in the application.
And then if we take a look at the four towns or whatever that she mentioned, she sent links, right?
Yeah.
And I'll send links to you guys. Would you take a look at what the other towns are doing?
Sure.
And see if we can't come up with, because it is like you don't know what to do, right?
Yeah.
One of the other things I noticed was, we got something about something happening in North Borough.
Yes.
Looking for a variance. And I noticed attached to the paperwork that the people turned in for the variance, were those, were a list of questions that they had to answer that applied to Section Ten. And I think as part of our rules, what we might do is say, and for a variance, you have to fill out the sheet. And you can see in there what they listed, how they listed it, but it's like, what financial hardship did that need? Okay, and then to answer the question. And we can do it maybe both online and in a document. Does anybody have, do you have anything to talk about us, about finances?
No, finances are good.
It's the beginning of the year, you just wait.
Did you spend all the money?
Okay, what about minutes?
I moved to... I moved to accept the mess from the August fourteenth meeting.
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, anyone abstaining or voting present? Yes, because you weren't here, okay. Sign the warrants. Okay. Anybody have any other questions?
I don't think so.
Go on.
Is that Chapter Forty-A, that small packet, is that online, or can I get that somewhere?
Yeah, I have past documents.
Yeah, I think I have an extra one in the box. I don't know. She took one off, then. But she got extras the last time we went.
I went, yeah, when I went into the State House, I got it.
Wait a minute, I got this. Is it, is this, is it this?
No, it's a yellow cover.
It's yellow, and it says Chapter Forty-A of the Massachusetts General law.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, wait a minute.
Yeah, oh, I got it. You got it. How's that for...
And if you look at Section Ten, like, it tells you about variances and special permits and et cetera. So could I trouble you, Lee, and electronically, if you would, to send everyone what we might consider our rules and regulations?
Yeah.
And then we can take a look at it, and a list of those four towns that she had put links to. So you could take a look at it, and you could see what maybe we want to add or subtract. And on the North Borough variance, the little thing they had afterwards that showed, it listed like five or six questions, and what it did is it addressed the issues in Forty-A, Section Ten. And maybe we can put as part of our rules, when you ask for a variance, you fill out this sheet. And we can help.
Pass those down. These are the bigger drawings submitted for twenty-eight Oak Street.
Oh.
I still have not, we still have not the layout plan.
It's the same, it's the same thing, it's just a little bigger.
So I think the paper is bigger, but the sheets are still small.
Oh my gosh. I'm so eager to read it.
Oh, so all they did was put this, let's put it on a bigger piece of paper.
Okay.
Do we, I don't have with me, and I don't know if maybe it's shut down, Kate, but do you have a package for our variance, so I can read that up? Like, they're, they're, will they initially? Do I have it all jointly?
I have, I hesitate to give you mine.
Oh, no, I wouldn't... Yeah, the one that was here tonight?
Oh, the one that was here tonight. Richard, yes, yes.
Okay, that's okay.
Here, you can have that.
Oh, no, um...
I don't want...
Danny Potter's...
These people.
Next month.
Next month.
Next month, so next month will be, well, each week, yeah, September will be twenty-eight Oak Street. Will be asking me, I've been listening to people as well.
In our motion, when did we continue the, if...
Twenty-eight.
To October, right?
It's nine, comprehensive, October nine.
Okay.
So next month is twenty-eight Oak Street, and October will be in two thousand and twelve.
Sounds right.
What's the, did you look at the stuff that came out for twenty-eight Oak Street?
Yes, very interesting.
Did you like it?
It's all milked.
I know, yeah, it is. Did you, I have a picture of it.
So what are you doing? I mean, if it's taken us tonight, we can tear it down. Oops. We have to wait until next week, next month?
Yeah, so that's all we have next month, right?
Yes. Yes. And that's up now. Now, if that's the only thing next month, I'd be sitting out there. Because I have to check up the-
My understanding is you shouldn't be in the room, but if you sit out there, if you're in a butter, yes.
Because I was in a butter on the other one. I don't know, right? Mark was always there for, remember the two houses on the line? Yeah, I was always here for the village.
I'm in a butter for 28 Oak Street. Can she be present as an authority?
I?
I would.
Yeah, weren't you here for the puppy place? You were here for puppy place.
No, I wasn't.
You left.
I left the room.
You did? Good. Puppy place.
Here, my donation. Okay, next, change of motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Is there a second please? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Oh, it is, it's much bigger.